That's correct, Jerry. Mr. Bly is here for that one.
Okay, thank you.
That way we've got both names in.
I like that.
Minutes.
Yes, I had a couple of corrections that I just gave typos to Kirsten.
So they were typos only?
Yes, except for on 20056, the last line, it says auditor is almost paid off, and I believe our discussion was the auditor is almost finished.
Okay.
It didn't, I don't think it had anything to do with payment. We were just commenting because we were paying him that he was almost done with their work.
Is that everybody's correct recollection?
Yes.
So we make a motion with that change?
Yes, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to proceed with these minutes and to the record as presented with the correction that was mentioned. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none all in favor? Thank you. Welcome. We'll proceed then with the warrants, Mr. Price?
Absolutely, and I hope, does everybody have a copy of these, Eric?
They're available on-
Oh, that's right, okay, good, good, good. So that's just what I'll do-
We have paper as well.
Yeah, I'll go through them.
If I get there, I'll let you know.
Yes, so we're talking about warrants thirty-one and thirty-two, or and thirty-three and thirty-four, two separate warrants, but still very important. So, let's start. Warrant thirty-one and thirty-two, mostly state fees in thirty-one, and I can hit some of the bigger items if you would like. If you look at warrant thirty-one, you can see there are Callahan Construction, that's on the Miranda Cook Dam, that's a big-ticket item. Looks like we have some, like I said, the vehicular, motor vehicle fees, but nothing that I felt like was, anything that was required special attention. I think part of what we're doing is all the, all the big-ticket items we've already approved and things like that. Any questions that anyone would have on that, or Eric, anything that you feel I should explain?
We'll note that thirty-three and thirty-four is actually a typo, we're just looking at thirty-one and thirty-two.
That's what I thought, but I said it because I looked at the thing and then I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, it was, it was-
But I, see, I was like improvising and trying to support you.
I got carried away with the numbers.
That's all right, I didn't see those, so I just wanted to double-check. So, that's warrant thirty-one, and thirty-two is just payroll. So what I would do is offer to move that we approve warrants thirty-one and thirty-two in the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents.
I second that.
It's been moved and seven, and seconded to approve warrants thirty-one and thirty-two, is that the correct numbers?
Mm-hmm.
In the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. Are there any questions or comments or discussion on the motion?
Just one quick one.
Please.
Two Trees Forestry, is that just our standard fee, the twelve hundred that we pay them for managing the forest?
I believe it was either the Forest Management Plan or the Invasives Management, was that Invasives?
No, it was marking, the boundary marking.
Oh, the boundary markings, that's right, yeah.
Well, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Perfect.
I'm happy.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Thank you, warrants thirty-one and thirty-two approved. Mr. Bly, you go to the microphone, we'll go ahead and hear an update on the bicentennial grants and joint small grant proposal.
Jerry Bly, I'm a member of the Reedfield Conservation Commission. Bob Harris may show up here, president of the Historical Society. But I'm here to talk very briefly about the Pulling Stones Initiative on Reedfield Fairgrounds. The Pulling Stones are the most visible remaining artifact of the historic Reedfield Fair, which, as you know, was quite the to-do back in the day. We wanted to make their, excuse me, they're located on the east side of the fairgrounds. Come on in.
Timing's everything.
Yeah, great job.
Bob Harris, the unimpeachable president of Reedfield Historical-
That's right.
So they're located over near the eastern boundary, so just east of the ball field there. And we wanted to, you have to know where they are to find them, and we wanted to make them more visible to the public. Originally, we had planned a little side trail off what is the Upper Fairgrounds Trail, which is the trail that leads from the ball field to the field, the school field there. We had some concerns from neighbors which are located, who are located not too far from the Pulling Stones in terms of concerns regarding their privacy. So we went back to think of an alternative plan, and the plan is, we approached the Historical Society to develop this plan with us, to take, to move a number of the Pulling Stones, not all of them, but a number of the Pulling Stones, to a new exhibit area alongside the Upper Fairgrounds Trail, so that people would have ready access to them. Dale Clark has offered to donate, I think in honor of her mother, an interpretive plaque to be erected there. We'll put a gravel base and set probably about a half dozen of the stones there. And we're planning to make a bit of an event around the moving of them. We're hoping to have them pulled by oxen from their existing site to the new site. Brandon Fike and his son have expressed some interest in helping out with that. And we're looking to do that on June, Saturday, June twentieth, I believe, in the morning sometime, we haven't figured out the details. And we are applying for, through the Historical Society, they are applying for a small bicentennial grant of five hundred dollars to support both the relocation and the new exhibit area, as well as the event. Probably can have some refreshments, old-time fair refreshments there as well, and it should be a good time. And so we, we are going to, as I mentioned, submit that grant proposal through the Historical Society. They have a February first deadline, we're planning on doing that. We understand the town may be submitting some of its own grants, grant or grants, to that program as well later on, but we figured we would go, but that was good. Bob, anything further that you want to share?
At the microphone, of course, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
Here's some pictures, old pictures of the fairgrounds and-
Yeah, we like pictures.
Gotta have pictures, right?
Pictures.
Okay, just gonna give you a real brief history of the fairgrounds, you probably know it all, but I, I'm just gonna-
Don't count on it.
Is that okay? You guys know a lot.
We know how to be educated, go ahead, Bob.
The Kennebec County Agricultural Society was founded in seventeen eighty-seven. The reason I'm giving you, telling you that is because that's where the first fair started, came from, was the Kennebec County Agricultural Society. And it was the second in the country, first one, I believe, was in Pennsylvania, three early years earlier. In eighteen thirty-two, the first fair was started at the, and that wasn't at the fairground. Each town had their own, they didn't have their own fair, they, each town in Kennebec County got to have a fair, so. So they chose one town after, you know, and then moved to another one and another one, so. And then in eighteen fifty-six, they chose Reedfield, the Reedfield Fairgrounds, to where they would have a fair every year. And, let's see. Yeah, they, they would, and that would be the permanent site, and they built exhibition buildings there. And in eighteen ninety-two, the first grandstand was built, the new grandstand for the trotting track. There was a half-mile trotting track, and that really gave Reedfield, and the, and the fair, you know, the fair boost. And it was, the next forty years was doing great.
How many?
Forty.
Forty, wow.
From eighteen ninety-two right up until nineteen thirty-two, that was when the depression hit, and it killed the fairs, and it closed down in thirty-two. So, and they had all kinds of different things, they had, in the twenties, they had airplanes, biplanes come in, and they'd fly around, and they'd give people rides and everything. They had balloon rides, and they had boxing matches, and different towns would have different baseball teams, and they'd play against each other, and they had the Gold Glove that they won, and that was a big deal, and Reedfield had its own band. If you look close in any of those band pictures, you see on the big drum, it says Reedfield Band on it. So, and that provided the music.
That's amazing.
And in nineteen forty-eight, oh, in nineteen thirty-two it was closed, then in nineteen forty-eight, after the war, they had a, they decided to have the Grange Fair there, and they had the Grange Fair there until nineteen sixty-four. In nineteen sixty-two, I had the pleasure to see Governor John Reed make a speech midway in the fairgrounds.
Oh, wow.
And in the nineteen seventies, Joan Nyman McDougall sold the fairgrounds to- Barbara Gilmore, yes, and she developed it and it is what it is today, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we bought the rest, yes, we bought a chunk of it, how many acres, thirty, eight, something like that?
And when you say "we," you mean?
Us the town.
We the town, not we the Historical Society.
Right, and that's where-
Right, we, not we the Historical Society.
And that's where those, that's where the trails are now, the fairground trails. In those pictures, there's one, because there's one where you, there, it's a view from the back of the fairgrounds looking out, and you can see the lake.
Lake, yeah.
So it's almost as if you were in line looking from like part of that trail where it's all grown up, looking out that way, it's an interesting thing.
Oh, and another thing is, the Pulling Stones, everybody had skids for their oxen, and all the fields, and there were no fields, but of course, they, when they came here, and they, and all of oxen, they had to roll the stones up onto the sleds to clear the fields, and they'd haul them over the stone wall, and then unload the sleds, and then haul them back out into field. So Pulling Stones were, that was a lot to, you know, that was a lot of the history, it's right there.
That's great. That was the origin of the term rolling stones, right?
That's right.
Thank you, Bob. So I don't know, I don't think this requires any board action-
Because it's a historical society.
Because it's Historical Society applying for it, although we're endorsing it being done on town property, so maybe we should, I would just, for the record, go ahead and move that we welcome, once that grant is gained, the work being done on our property. I don't really think this is necessary to a great extent, but we'll put it on the record as such.
Yeah, and I just want to, I just want to point out too, for both you guys, that the, certainly this year with Heritage Days, it's important, I think, to pump up the fact that we are celebrating the bicentennial Maine, not only, but also as part of the celebration. So knowing that those Pulling Stones will be relocated, we'll make sure that we can, certainly during the Heritage Days, because we anticipate being back up there, at least at the fairgrounds for a little bit. So, at Ball Field anyway, so that's good, excellent. If we can do anything, please let us know.
So is that a long-winded way to get me a second?
Yes, I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to support the grant. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. I really am excited about the idea that you're gonna have horses do that, I mean, oxen do that, that's a great idea.
That could be a great event.
It will be photographed right there.
Please let me know how I can use the Facebook page, because I can market, it's a strength.
Thank you.
And we'll photograph it and like video it and post it and-
Boomerang it, we're gonna TikTok it, boomerang it, snap it. We're gonna Insta, it's gonna be all over the place.
Really want to advertise it, we want to-
Yeah.
Yeah, we plan to.
Good, excellent. Yes.
No problem. Before we proceed any further, the gentleman that just came in a little bit, are you here for a particular item on, on the agenda?
She's doing a mayor manager sketch.
Excellent, excellent, welcome, great.
Welcome, yeah.
We just, we just try to take people, if they happen to show up for one specific item, and it's not gonna, it just pertains to them, we try to take them out of order.
You'd be surprised, I may be able to leave right after we-
Which you will observe in just one moment.
Yes, exactly right, yes.
We'll move on to select board communications, do any members of the board have anything that they would like to relate or say?
I do, I have two. So one, I've noticed several times, but I just noticed it tonight, so I'm gonna bring it up again. I think we need a little update on the bathroom upstairs, like the cobwebs that are up on the ten-foot ceiling probably need to be cleaned off. But the border on the wallpaper is like all peeling up, and there's a piece of baseboard missing, and I see that this building is used almost constantly. So I think it would be cool if we have any border left, or to put something else in its place, and I'd be happy to assist anybody with that. It's not a complaint, it's just something I've noticed, so I don't want anyone to feel bad that I've said it. Otherwise, the room is really nice, it's clean, it's neat, no complaints. And then the other thing is, I mentioned to Eric when I arrived tonight, in speaking with one of the assistant fire chiefs in Belgrade, when they, I have a proposal for another ordinance, and I know we don't like to have a lot, but I think you might agree with us. When the tanker truck rolled over, had a crash, had a crash and then rolled over, because there was an accident on Route twenty-seven about a year ago. That ended up costing a million dollars to clean up, and nine hundred and ten thousand dollars of that was covered, but ninety thousand was not. And Belgrade did not have an ordinance that said specifically that the town may bill the insurance companies of out-of-town persons who have an accident or a claim on a road in their town. So Belgrade had to eat the ninety thousand dollars as an unanticipated expense, so they are putting in an ordinance. I know that Manchester did this, I believe, last year, because they've had so many different calls on Route two oh two, especially down at seventeen, with out-of-town people, and they're spending all of their Manchester rescue and fire dollars, and they can't get reimbursed from insurance, which reimburses in full. But you, the insurance doesn't have to pay unless there's a municipal ordinance that says the town can bill. So I was thinking with a railroad, with all the buses that come back and forth for the camps down seventeen, we don't want to get stuck with something like that. So that seems to me, it's probably something that MMA is involved in, and there may be a very- Already made ordinance that towns can use.
So I think, I think Eric's taking copious notes. Eric, if you'll just touch base with MMA and perhaps a friendly call to Belgrade and Manchester will give us some idea of what they're doing. Any other members of the board that wish to add anything?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for the, this could be very important to us down the road.
I will go. I just want to say that we are going to shoot for our first meeting for Heritage Days. And our first organizational meeting for Heritage Days will hopefully happen on Sunday, February twenty-third. We're looking at that date, we'd like to be up here, I still have to secure the building and make sure, but I don't think there's anything else there on a Sunday. But that's basically going to be our first organizational meeting to talk about the, what would be almost six months, seven months ahead of the planning for Heritage Days. This year, in case you were curious, Heritage Days is happening on August seventh, eighth, and ninth. And so, seven, eight, nine, right there in August, it is actually the weekend, it's the second full weekend. August is weird, because it has five Saturdays this year, so, seven, eight, nine, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. We're already working with the Union Meeting House about ways to have some collaboration and some things going on there. We're talking about what's going to be happening down at the beach, some really great ideas, some feedback that we got last year, and we talked about, that we want to bring out this year. So we're looking for anyone who'd be interested, I promise you, our meetings are fun, there are always refreshments. And at this next meeting, February twenty-third, it is a cookie party. I repeat, cookie party. So the twenty-third, I'll tell more about it, there'll also be an article coming out in the Messenger, but I like Heritage Days, it was a fun time last year, and we're looking to do an even better job this year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other members of the board?
Real quick, the Union Meeting House vestry has a fundraiser February eighth, it's a turkey pie dinner here at the town office.
What's the date?
Eighth, February eighth, from five to six thirty.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to staff reports, Eric, more's yours.
All right, thank you, because I have some scout, a scout here with a parent, and it's a wonderful program. I did scouting for a very long time, and it's great to have some extra civic engagement, so thank you both for coming and sticking with it.
Absolutely.
It's an awesome, awesome thing. I don't have a formal town manager's report, but I did want to run through a couple of quick things that have happened over the last couple of weeks. I'm very excited to report that today I had a meeting with a representative from Maine DOT and KV COG to talk about the Reedfield Corner safety issues in front of the post office, so finally getting some traction, and very well received, and we had a really positive discussion around what some of the limitations were with the area, but also what could be done and what was, what was possible. And most everything that we would like to do up there is possible, to remove those spaces where we have the parallel parking that can sometimes obstruct traffic and make a terrible winter safety hazard, also talking about some of the traffic flow in that area. So, good progress, and I'm really happy that that's finally moving ahead. I also want to say that we are working with property owners to try to avoid foreclosures. We had a list a couple of months ago, about twenty-five, we're down to probably twenty, and over the next two to three weeks, we should have that down to just, you know, a half dozen or so. Hard to say now exactly what the outcomes will be, a number of these do have mortgages associated with them. However, we're moving forward with the due diligence that's required. I went out with our code enforcement officer to do an assessment of some of the likely candidates. If we do have issues with payment, of course, working very hard to make sure that we don't have to do that. And if we do, that we're able to do so in a way that's as fair as possible to the property owner. So that is something that's coming up, but I wanted to let the board know that we're working on it, and also put the word out again that we are available to talk about things like abatements, finding additional resources, helping people pull their stuff together to keep their properties if there's a need, so.
Can I, can I just ask you?
Sure.
Last year, we had one person come and pay too late.
Yes.
Did they get that all straightened out?
They did, we were able to figure that out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the deadline for that?
February twelfth.
Thank you. That's paid by what time?
And close of business on February twelfth.
Which is a Wednesday, so that would be six P.M.
Six P.M., yeah.
That's been important before.
Yes, it is, yeah, and also, we do have a redemption period if there's a foreclosure, there's a month in which if all past due taxes are paid, the property can be returned without any, any change of ownership, so.
It is the-
If you pay it by the twelfth, you only have to pay the one year in question. If you pay it afterwards, in that thirty-day period, you have to pay all years.
Yes, and, and fees and interest and all that, so it gets much more difficult and expensive.
Right, and, and I think the underlying lesson that we hope to impart in having this conversation, and mentioning this especially, is that is the last thing that the town of Reedfield is interested in having happen to anyone's home or anyone's property. So we are, I think we do a very good job of trying to work every possible angle, every year, I know you do a good job of trying to do that. So if you're watching this, or you hear someone, or you know someone, please tell them to come see us. Inaction will lead to nothing, but, but if there's something that we can do, please come to see us at the town office.
There are programs, as Eric said.
Absolutely, and this guy, right here, will help you or know someone that can.
Do what we can, absolutely. We also have issues of outstanding personal property taxes, which is a somewhat different scenario. I did attend a day-long training for small claims court collection process. Every five to six years, municipalities typically go about the process of trying to collect and clean up personal properties taxes that are outstanding. One of the things that we need to do that we haven't, in order to proceed with this, is to have a policy on the collection of personal property taxes. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up, that I'll be working on that and bringing that forward. I've been here for four years, it'll be five in no time, and I'd like to be able to clean up the things that have been accrued under my watch, anyway.
And that's in the policy venue?
That's in the policy venue, it would not be in ordinance.
Okay, great.
So that's an update on that. Also, the backhoe at the transfer station, we have landed on a final decision. We're looking at a JCB backhoe, which was actually one of the ones we hadn't brought forward yet, so that flexibility the board afforded me at the last meeting was appreciated. And we've been able to go out and look at the equipment, and has tried some of it out where possible. And we're looking at a final price of around eighty-two thousand nine hundred. So, a pretty good deal, a five-year warranty, we have the foam-filled tires, so that we won't have any flats on site. We have the thumb, we have the extender hoe, so this is a pretty good piece of equipment where we need it. It doesn't have the fancy electronic joystick controls, it has the old lever style, but we tried to put our money into the things that were most important for the service of the, of the equipment at the transfer station, so just wanted to update the board on that, that we're moving forward.
Service is local, reasonably local, I should say.
Lewiston area, yes, so a lot closer than Bangor or Scarborough or Westbrook, so some value there as well.
Yeah. And does that include a trade-in, and what are we looking at for a loan cost, a lease cost?
Does include a trade-in, that would put us with a loan cost of around fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars, which would be, geez, I'd say if we're doing a five-year, yeah, probably eleven to twelve thousand dollars annually, with the first payment happening at the signing of the, of the lease.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Reno.
My father was Mr. Reno.
Hey, Ralph, anything else?
So, that's my-
So do we know when, are you ordering yet?
We're just to about right here.
We're in process, we're getting the final paperwork, and we should be able to have it, if it's in Georgia where they believe that the current stock is, they have to ship it up from there. That should be seven to ten days, once we, once we get the paperwork.
A couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah, and we'll take care of the financing, hopefully a few days before the delivery, but we'll be holding the check until-
And could you just tell me the model number one more time, what kind it is?
Oh, boy, we have a JCB three C X dash fourteen, Eco Max, seventy-four horsepower.
You get Anna talking about it, you'll hear everything it has.
I don't want to do that. I mean, I love Anna, but I'm, that's why I have Google.
So that'll conclude my interim, I guess, town manager's report, I usually do those monthly, but-
Right.
I wanted to give some updates. Moving on to the treasurer's report, check reconciliation was completed through December thirt- 31st of 2019. We have one bounced check from a resident, which is uncommon. I'm always saying that we very rarely have those, so I just wanted to point that out because that did show in our financials. With respect to the budget, preliminary budget numbers were due in December, and so that allowed us to have a full budget draft for the January budget meeting, which is a change in pace, was a bit more work up front, but I think in the long run will help with the big picture and getting us better outcomes and a little bit more efficiency in how we approach budgeting. So, good news there. The audit, again, wrapping up very soon. Hope to have all the final questions answered this week. It was kind of a funny discussion at the budget committee meeting last week. One of the members said, "Well, you know, it's your audit. You can tell them that if they're asking stupid questions, you can tell them to just lay off." I said, "You know, you're absolutely right. We're getting to the point now where we're answering questions that are really in the weeds." And not that we don't want to answer everything possible, but there comes a time when we need to say, "Well, you know, we're moving to wrap this up." Otherwise, it could go on for a long time, and we do want to wrap that up, so. Moving on to general comments about the month of December. Accounts should be about 50% expended for the year. Receipts in December were up from FY '19 to FY '20, and that's likely as a result of tax payments. Net revenues are up for the month from '19 to '20, but they're down just about half of a percent for the year. That's a little bit of an anomaly, and I expect that'll even out. And actually, we should be, if everything works out the way it should, moving into positive numbers over the next couple of months there. So, that is an improvement over the prior month's balance, so I think that we're headed in the right direction. And transfer station revenue, again, came in above the November or December of 2018 numbers. So, that's, I think, the seventh month in a row, sixth or seventh, that we've had sizable increases. This month, it was a 50% increase, $1,000 in aggregate. So, that positive trend is continuing, and I'm happy to take any questions on either my treasurer's report or general town operations under the town manager.
Is there any questions for Eric?
And Eric, in terms of the, I'm just going back to the loader again because I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. There was, this is a, this is a, an expenditure that we had saved money for?
Yes, we have $30,000 in reserve.
Okay. And then, we are, and the cost of this machine was, what's the difference?
All in with trade and everything else would be $82,900. So, we're, $52,900 is the...
Gotcha. And that's what, that's what we're leasing to purchase it, correct?
That's correct. We're doing a five-year lease through Andrew Scoggan Bank, and we'll have a low rate, I can't remember, but somewhere around 3%.
Yeah, we're not paying for that whole, that $55,000 that's being paid through the lease is being shared by the three partner towns in the solid waste. I'm saying that wrong.
Well, we've been in a local agreement.
Right, through the interlocal agreement, but it's not...
So, Wayne and Fay are contributing their capital share, which is approximately a quarter each to Reedfield a half, and that's based on property value division, correct?
That's right, yeah. It's based on the state valuation.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got it right because I think that's a cool thing that people should know.
I will make a quick clarification on that, but we own it.
Absolutely.
We own it, yes.
Yes.
But we are using it like 95-plus percent at the transfer station. We have the right to use it occasionally off-site, but that's been its use for the last number of years, and the partner towns are very happy with this arrangement that Reedfield is using its capital reserve and that they're going to have a functioning machine to keep the station doing well.
I'm sure Eric has answered this already, but they're going to take the old one as a trade, so we don't have to worry about selling it.
Absolutely. We just sign it over, and they're going to go up to Bangor and pick it up for us, so we don't have to look at it ever again.
There you go.
Take some pictures to remind you.
Yeah.
We'll keep the repair bills.
Yeah.
We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the age-friendly committee for the minutes of October 16 and December 11, 2019. We received a number of minutes also from the conservation commission for July 9, September 10, October 15, and November 12, 2019, and the library board minutes of November 6, 2019. Probably are a couple of other committees that have 2019 minutes coming in, I suppose, but that's a pretty good wrap on some major work that was done during the year by these volunteers serving on these committees. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the select board? None, thank you. Ralph, on...
Excuse me? Can I, can we just, can I request someone speak? What is your name?
Abby.
Abby, all right. Thank you very much. And what is your name, sir?
I'm Michael.
Michael, all right. Well, thank you, Abby and Michael. Normally, we make you go to the microphone, but I just want to say thank you again.
And by showing up doesn't mean you have to say something, so no pressure.
That's right. That's right. We try to make it as easy as possible. Thank you.
We'll move on to new business. Ralph, we did already hear 20064. We took that out of order. We'll now move on to 20065, which is consider proposals for the fire station expansion and library roof projects. This is not a complete presentation or finalization at this point, correct, Eric?
That's correct, yes.
So, really, we're, I don't even actually expect we'll take the whole 15 minutes necessarily. It's sort of like a check-through process. You can kind of update us as to where we are.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, I'll start by thanking Ralph for his support with this project. He's been a great set of eyes and ears to work with on this. Also, Chief Mank. And we've turned a corner on this. We received five proposals, and it was a better turnout than I think anybody expected and a better, probably as good of an outcome as we could have expected financially, considering the budget numbers that we had and the costs that we were anticipating following the individual bid of the library roof RFP. So, we had numbers that came in...
Can you remind us what that original roof only was?
I think we were looking at $125,000 roughly.
That was the original one, not out of these five?
Not out of these five, that's correct, yeah.
So, they're, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And the number that we had anticipated when we sent the bids out was, what, around $85,000?
Yeah, yeah. And we had one bid that came in close to that out of this group, and the others weren't too much more, but certainly better than what we had seen in the past. And the fire station came in in a similar range, more than we would have hoped, but all told, it's my belief that if we were to select the low bidder or the apparent low bid, that we would be able to accomplish the project if we do not have a contingency. And that's one thing I wanted to point out, is that we are a little short on the project. However, I believe that we can address that shortfall pretty easily with the upcoming FY '21 budget. This project will go into that FY '21 budget year, so it's certainly not out of the question that we could do that. We're also looking to work on fundraising with the fire department to see how much of that we could pull out. In this current year budget, we do have tens of hundreds of thousands, I guess, really, in a building capital reserve. My thoughts would be that perhaps we could continue that in a smaller amount for the FY '21 year to make up that deficit. So, I guess what I wanted to do is say that we had a good bidding process or proposal process. There was, there were a few issues with the proposals, and this is something that I want the board to be fully aware of and take note of because it's not uncommon to have issues or errors with a proposal. However, we need to be very careful that we're acting in the best interest of the town while also maintaining the integrity of the bidding process. And so, the apparent low bid unfortunately had two errors that need to be addressed, one of which was a tabulation error, not affecting the bottom line, but there were some misplaced items within their line item budget. Again, the bottom line is solid, so that's a little bit less of a concern. That's something that we could look at as a technicality. However, it has been raised as a concern. The other component of this is the lack of a list of equipment. That was a requirement of the bid. The town of Reedfield does reserve the right to accept or reject any or all bids for any reason and to act in the best interest of the town of Reedfield. That's right in the instructions to proposers. We do have the right to exercise that. The question is how far we want to go with that. The difference in cost is apparent. We're looking at about a $30,000 difference between this bid and the next lowest bidder, and there are other considerations as well. I have reached out to our engineers to start the discussion. I've reached out to the town attorney, and I will also be reaching out to Maine Municipal Association Legal Services Department to get as full a picture on this as possible. The last thing we want to do is accept a bid that is flawed to the point where it doesn't serve the interests of the town of Reedfield, or on the other side, let a minor technicality cost us 30 to 50 or some other thousands of dollars. A bit of a fine line, but my point in bringing all this up is to let the board know that we will be pursuing this, and on February 3rd, coming forward with a recommendation that has considered all of those factors, including reference checks and other due diligence that Ralph I know is going to help me out with. So, yeah, I'm not sure if there's anything else that I can say at this point, other than, Ralph, do you have anything you want to add or...
Well, I went into that bid opening with a lot of trepidation, and I think the outcome was very good for us. And the anomalies in the apparent low bidder's proposal don't seem to be insurmountable, but Eric is right, we need to review. Other bid packages also had some anomalies in them. So, it wasn't as if the company that might end up being the preferred bidder was a standalone in terms of irregularities in the numbers. There were others. I think we're heading down the right path and looking forward to finally getting all this stuff off the ground after Eric's put in so much time and energy. It's been a time-consuming process, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of fine work involved to it.
Right from the get-go.
Making a quilt, you know? If that's a proper metaphor, I guess. Time and a lot of energy.
I have questions. I'll never...
Okay. What I try to do is limit questions, maybe not diving into the specifics of some of the costs, because I think we're still in a review process, so.
Right. Yes, but no, because what I just heard is that we're going to come back with a recommendation for our next meeting, so I want to have a chance for us to get into the weeds a bit with it as a group, not just have a recommendation and dissect that one.
I agree.
Because this is a million dollars essentially. And so, anyway, so my questions are, the fire department donations, that's a current estimate of $50,000. Has any of that been raised?
They've got $25,000 in hand, and...
Is that from prior donations, or is that for this particular project?
That is for this particular project. They've been focusing their fundraising efforts for the last year essentially on this one project. So, they had a small balance, I believe, to begin with. Their last, as the chief says, tin cup letter, all of that went into the auxiliary, not the auxiliary, but the firefighters' association account with the intent that it would be used for this purpose. So, they're on board with it, and I'm hoping that they can continue with that fundraising and pull another 15 or so thousand or more out of their donation letters and individual efforts. But they do have a few large donors that they're working with that will hopefully round that out. I don't see any issue with them meeting that $50,000 goal. Again, I'd love to see them exceed it because it would then mean that we would have less coming out of the tax base.
Okay. And that, those donations, it's understood, are going towards the construction costs, not towards additional items that may be desired for the new station?
The one item that I did include that would fall somewhere in the middle would be the appliances and furniture and things like that. So, that is a cost that, you know, wasn't part of the RFP. We weren't looking for proposals for a stove, but we still have to buy one. So, that's somewhere in the middle. It's a necessary component, but there is some discretion around it.
The use of fire department reserves, those are designated funds that are already on hand?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And we're not looking for this $50,000 in donations to be in this current fiscal year? It can be in the course of the project, is that correct?
Yes. I will say, requested that the first $25,000 be signed over, I guess, before the start of the project, so we can have a little bit of additional funds on hand.
Okay.
So, yes.
I just think these are really important points for the public as well as for me. There evidently are no library reserves in designated funds, which is why that is blank?
Yes, we had originally intended for $7,000 of the grant from the Stephen King Foundation to be used along with a, you know, in conjunction with, or maybe not the full $7,000 from the grant, but a combination of $1,000 to $2,000 in reserves plus the grant. That's since been expended on a lot of those things that we were thinking we would maybe do in a second phase. So, I think that it's great that they have the heat pumps installed now. They've done cosmetic work. They have put in energy efficiency components, the cellular shades, things like that. So, they've done LED lighting work. So, a lot of the things we were planning on doing with cosmetically and to improve the operation overall with the building, were just done essentially out of sequence. So, in effect, that money's already been put in, but it's been put into things that would be outside of the more proper capital category.
Okay. Just working up the money here. Designated fund that was in the budget, the current budget?
Current FY '20 budget, that's correct.
The use of undesignated funds.
The use of undesignated funds, right.
Both designated and...
The warrant actually covered that.
Yes, that's correct, yep.
It was two pieces.
Right, when we asked the voters, that's what was approved.
Right. It was $235 and $55.
Which is not all going to happen in this fiscal year because we're pretty certain this isn't going to be finished by July 1st.
Positive.
Okay. So, that brings up another point. I know that we asked to put out a bond for $550,000, but we have not gotten that yet.
No.
We've not even applied for it yet.
No, the application deadline is February 12th. Now that we have proposals in hand, I will be working with the bond bank, and of course, we will be requesting the full $550,000. And that is, we've initiated the process with our bond council. We've been in communication. So, that will be a top priority over the next month to get that wrapped up and submitted before the 12th.
Okay. So, thank you for all of that. So, now my questions. Well, my actual, my comment kind of questions. Those were interpretive things I needed to understand.
Sure.
So, I have a couple of concerns. One is that all of the bids came in over our budget, and I think I heard you say that we can possibly cover that through undesignated fund balance in the upcoming budget that we are in the midst of creating.
Yes, either undesignated fund or an additional tax commitment.
Okay. And so, would we be able to begin the project if we are then asking the taxpayers for money on the current warrant?
I would feel a little bit uneasy about that, but as I said, the, outside of the contingency dollars, in theory, we can realize this project with what we have available through the FY '20 budget. However, that contingency is important and, as with any project, almost certain to be used.
Right. Okay. So, then my comments, and then I'll be finished.
Sure.
I have always had strong feelings about not taking the low bidder or any bidder based on their dollars, but based on the value that they're providing for the project that we asked to be specked out. for the project that we asked to be specked out. Um, I saw some wildly different numbers, for instance, just on demolition.
Yeah.
Um, ranging from eighteen thousand, I'm going to get this wrong, eight, three thousand to eighteen thousand.
For the fire department or the library?
For the fire department.
Yeah, okay.
Um, that's a huge spread and there were some other things like that. So I don't know if it's just how they do it. I'm happy with whoever's dissecting this, um, the engineers, the architects, Ralph, you. But I have concerns when I see things that are that different.
Yeah. Um, my, my, my one point would be that I don't believe there's a line in that entire, uh, two pages of, of, of analysis or of summary that, that doesn't have pretty significant variation. It's not uncommon with proposals to have contractors divide up, uh, different, uh, things. Some will put all of their, uh, site supervision costs in the general category. Some will prorate it over all the categories. So, uh, it's, it's not uncommon. And we, we do look for patterns. I look to see who's using the same subcontractors. And Ralph and I and, and the engineer will, will be looking very closely at all of that. Uh, to, to, if something sticks out, like you said, the, the, the quadrupling of the costs for, for engineering or, excuse me, for a disposal and demolition, um, that, that we will be asking questions of the contractors to help.
But they could have the trucking in a different category, for instance.
Yep.
Exactly. Um, so I'm, I'm happy with that. I just wanted to point that out. And then my other concern is that, no one will be happy with me, except maybe the library. This is not going to include, based on the numbers that we've gotten, putting in that exterior enter, exit, the, the second egress from the second floor of the library. So we're going to have sunk all this money in. We, the library has sunk in their grant money and we're going to have a building that's unfinished. And I don't think the possibility of going back to the voters in a year or two and saying, "Oh, by the way, now we need another ten thousand dollars," or seven thousand, or whatever it is to finish the project. I would like to see the project finished. Uh, if we're going to put all this money into the building and have it there and we want it to be usable, I think we need to do it all at once. So I would just request that we figure out a way in our current budgeting process to make sure that that egress is put in there.
But we don't have a way to make that upper level available to everyone either. Cause it's.
Right.
It's only people who can go up the stairs that can go up there.
Right. But it becomes unusable space if we don't put the egress in to anyone. And so if we're sinking, I mean, in the last three or four years, I bet, if we look at this, we're a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand once we do this project. And I think to not put that last five to ten thousand in to finish it and make the building fully usable is questionable. So I would like us to question that and see how that can be fit in.
That's a really good point and, uh, I think that would, could be and would be a great use of any contingency funds. But, uh, that, that piece was not a part of the original RFP, so.
I know.
We'll have to, we'll have to work on it, but I, I very much appreciate that point.
So I've said my piece, thank you all.
Is it the fact that Sheridan is owned by my brother-in-law a problem?
Uh, no, as long as you disclose it.
Okay. I disclosed it.
Sheridan does great work.
Yeah.
Blaine Casey did a whole lot of fire stations. So, you know, and then you have the low bid. So, um, you know, I, I hope all those things are taken into consideration.
We'll talk about him a lot more in two weeks.
Okay. I think we're, we're.
Our language in the bid package did say, uh, we have, reserve the right to accept the lowest responsible bid. So in this case, it appears that if everything comes together and the sun and the moon, stars all align, they will be one and the same. But, uh, we did have that flexibility built into the bid package.
Well, and we've had bids before that we've opened where people had things missing and we didn't accept those bids. So I think we have to have a policy that we follow and decide if things that are, I don't think anything was omitted in seeing what came back through on the low bid. It was just, nothing changed. It was just how it was categorized.
Oh, yeah, on the financial side, they did, they were missing the one, um, technical requirement for a, a, equipment list. And, and I'm looking at that more closely as well. But I, I will point out that with the equipment list that we did receive from the contractors, uh, they were three to four items long. They did not include any make, model, capacity.
They weren't comprehensive.
On, and it was as simple as dump truck, forklift, backhoe, crane. And to me, that difference between having four items that have very little description and nothing at all isn't, isn't enough, uh, to, to, um, to, to, to make a big difference. And, but that's a question I want to ask MMA and be very thoughtful about because it, it is a technical component and one that was specifically called out. So we just, I just want to make sure that if we go that route, that we do so appropriately.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all set on this and we'll look forward to having a much fuller discussion and review and hopefully awarding, um, perhaps at the next meeting.
Yes.
We'll move on to conduct our very first draft review of the FY twenty-one municipal budget. All right. So Eric, at this point, um, maybe what you can do is tell us the departments that are complete? Are, are there any that are complete at this point?
Uh, they're, they're all complete. Uh, this is a full first draft. Uh, we have a few committees that we haven't heard from, but, uh, history shows that they have very little variation.
Okay.
Pretty much everything's been filled out. We have done, um.
So, so I, my remark that I really liked the first draft is, would be read on.
That's a good sign, I appreciate that, yeah. So, so, yeah, we have a, we have a complete first draft, which is, I'd say, going to be, um, reviewed and mauled over and carefully considered by the budget committee.
Sure.
We have a few changes that are, that are, um, major. If you wanted to look at it from that perspective first.
Let's do that.
The difference between, um, capital and, um, debt service is one of the bigger changes. Uh, we're moving more into capital and, um, moving out of debt service, if, if, uh, if that makes any sense. We do have a, uh, as far as the quantity of projects, the actual, uh, dollar value of that, uh, is, is changed. Uh, we have probably a fifty to sixty thousand dollar bump in debt service for this one year and then it drops off after that. Uh, but we're putting more money away in capital for future projects where we hadn't in the past. So that's a change. The revenues side, uh, we have increasing revenues, um, in, in motor vehicles and other areas. Again, uh, we have in net right now proposed about a twenty thousand dollar increase in, uh, the, uh, expenditures, um, that would be absorbed by tax revenue. So, uh, with the school staying flat. And all of this, again, is, is based on the fact that the school budget would be flat. We know that's not going to be the case, but we're talking about municipal. Uh, so right now, um, uh, those have changed. Uh, we don't have any bond revenue coming in, um, in FY twenty-one. Uh, we don't plan on borrowing, uh, for that, uh, for that year, which I, I think is, um, is a good thing. Uh, if need be, that could be accomplished, but my hope would be that, um, uh, that, that we avoid that and use reserves to get us through until we start seeing a decline, uh, a bigger decline in what we actually have for outstanding borrowing and, and that debt service. Most departments have stayed pretty much the same. We've seen the, the same patterns, uh, small increases in wages and insurance and things like that, um, and changes within the department for where we focus. Maintenance, for example, we're, we're, we're increasing, uh, costs for, uh, some, uh, tools and equipment, but we're decreasing in personal protective gear because we've actually tooled up pretty well in that area. Uh, you can only buy so many pairs of chaps and hard hats before you, you get a saturation point and we're there with that. So we're, we're looking at everything and being, um, uh, I think mindful in how we focus, uh, the spending. Uh, and we're seeing overall just a, a small increase. Again, the, the, the town, um, uh, overall expenditures, uh, were, let me try to find the summary here. Uh, looking at, um, including the school, about six point three million, uh, with about three and a half of that, uh, being the RSU.
Three seven?
Three points, three seven. So, um, a little bit more than half, probably fifty-five, sixty percent of that being the RSU. So a twenty thousand dollar increase on a, a, a three point X million dollar budget, really not bad. Uh, so I'm happy with that. And the net result is that the mill rate would, uh, stay, that, stay the same, considering that we have a small but a half a percent increase in taxable property value. Uh, one of the big, um, changes that, that shows up in the mill rate calculation that you don't see at all in the bottom line is the change in the homestead exemption. And that's key because, uh, we see an increase from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars of taxable value, which means that everybody that has a homestead exemption will be getting a, basically an extra hundred bucks. Uh, I expect this RSU will eat all of that and then some. Uh, but, uh, the reimbursement rate to the municipality for that, um, exemption, uh, increased as well. So it was really a, a perfect offset. Uh, and that's the way the legislature intended it and that's what we're seeing in our numbers. So, um, that's the high level.
Yeah. Is the, is item twelve, the state municipal revenue sharing, um, last year's number? Or that was supposed to be stepped, is that correct?
Item twelve for.
Item twelve on.
Which?
On the, um.
On the revenue?
Tax, on the pre-commitment estimate.
Oh.
The very last, well, it's not the last, but the mill rate calculation.
State municipal revenue sharing.
Two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Uh, that's based on the, um, the numbers that the state of Maine had provided.
Okay. So it's not last year's number?
Here.
No, yeah, yeah, that's right. That's, that's, um, a, a full FY twenty-one actual.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that is an increase from last year?
It is, yes.
And were we hoping that we would be able to turn that back to the taxpayers as we tried to do last year?
Well, it's actually, it's not really an increase because again, uh, it's, we lost an equal percentage in taxable property value. So the number at the top of the page drops by, uh, that five thousand dollars per taxable.
And we ate that difference.
And we ate the difference. So it's really, it's really nothing, I guess is the way to put it, unfortunately.
Because the state took it, then the state gave it back.
Yes, the state giveth and the state take it away.
So the municipal portion of the tax rate is flat?
At this point in time.
Essentially.
Yep.
That's what we're looking at, anticipating.
In, in all transparency, the one thing that we did, uh, see was, again, that, that roughly twenty thousand dollar increase in taxable valuation, uh, about one point one million dollars, uh, for new construction and new garages and remodels and things like that. Uh, and then the commensurate, um, uh, increase in expenditures of around twenty thousand dollars.
And since we were just talking about the dual building project, was that put into the expense side anywhere?
Right now, that doesn't show. So what we would be looking at would be an increase, um, in the use of the, um, undesigned fund or an increase in, uh, um, the, um, expense side with a, I mean, there could be a, a dozen different places that we could offset that. Uh, but we will likely be looking at the use of designated funds and the use of undesigned funds as the two primary valves to, um, to relieve that pressure.
It seems that it's kind of a chicken and egg situation because if we're going to approve a building contract or awarding bid to somebody, we need to know that we can cover it, but we don't know how much we need to cover it till we know which one we're picking, so.
Yeah, tricky. Tricky. And, and also the, the fundraising over this fiscal year could negate the need entirely. Um, and it, it might just be an exercise in raising the money and not spending it, uh, which would, if it's coming out of undesigned fund is a, is a great thing because it stays where it, where it, where it was intended to be or where it is in that fund.
And maybe if the fire department's passing the tin cup to raise money, we could just somehow do that with the library to get the additional egress.
Put it all on the other, yeah. Of the project.
Yep.
Fire Department's very good at fundraising. They, they have very busy fundraisers.
They are.
They could target that and go out and promote that, yeah.
Right. In a specific way, the way the fire department is doing. And again, I, I have great desire to see that finished, so I'd be willing to help. And I know you work with the library people, so.
Well, what I'd like to do is, um, and, and I'll talk, Eric, a little bit further with you on this, is, what we want to do, I think, is if we're going to be doing something that is in the building projects in fiscal twenty-one, okay? I think we, we need to build the timeline on how that breaks out. Is there something we would withhold from the final project if a vote failed to be approved? And you would have to probably build that into the contract.
Agreed, yeah.
That makes it pretty difficult, I think, in, in turn. Uh, I think it makes it clear, but it, you know, we really should not be committing any funds that we, uh, do not have voter approval for.
No.
To the project. I mean, we can anticipate we're going to be approved.
Sure.
But we need to have, we need to have the escape clause.
Yep, I agree.
And if we were to bid it with no contingency, I think that would be foolish because.
Well, I, I also have that concern, yep.
Yeah.
Things are rarely exact.
So where your low bidder is around fifty thousand off, I'm really reading that as a hundred thousand.
Well, I, I think it's fifty. Um, and the, the reason I say that is because, um, the, the, the variable costs that we're looking at are, they're, they're not many. Um, we know that, um, the trusses are going to cost a certain amount, the, the physical materials, the septic, uh, is a pretty reliable, uh, cost. So I'm, I'm much more comfortable about this and this level of contingency, which is actually pretty close to what the engineers had originally proposed, than I, uh, would be for, say, something like the Marina Hook Dam where we, I think.
Where you don't know what you're getting into.
Where we don't know what we're getting into. I think that we have a pretty good idea with this.
We are very lucky there.
But, so, so I, I, yeah, not to argue about it, but, uh, I, I think that we're, we're probably okay with that fifty thousand dollar number.
The fifty thousand dollars as a contingency?
As a contingency.
Okay, but where you place it above or below the final spending line is what I'm talking about.
Uh, well, so, so if, if we were to accept the apparent low bid, um, we would be within budget if there was no overages.
Okay.
So.
That's how the timeline would have to get built to.
Yes.
Here, here's the assumption for this piece of the timeline. Here is the assumption for when money comes in to fund this piece of the timeline. So we'll talk about that.
I see exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking there needs to be a timeline document that the board digests in terms of being able to explain to voters how this works.
Well, I'll make a note to bring that to the meeting on the third.
And if I'm, if I'm way off here, please tell me folks.
Well, I, I'm not, I don't want to assume anything from our public, but we had very good support for this project. And I think to, to have these exceptional bids after what we had gotten for the first bid on the library roof to come this close, I think people will be understanding that on a nine hundred thousand dollar project, close to a million dollars, if you need another fifty thousand dollars, that's unreasonable. If this was a hundred thousand dollar project and you're asking for fifty thousand, that's not.
Yeah, that's not good.
That's not very easy to explain.
Yeah.
But we have to get the approval, is, is the bottom line.
Yes.
To spend the money.
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things that we, yeah, I, you're absolutely right. We'll be talking with our low bidder or, or the, I won't say the low bidder, talk, with the, uh, accepted preferred bidder, preferred, preferred proposer, would be al- always higher lower cost if possible, but also those contingencies. We included a sample agreement with the proposal so that they had a rough idea of what we're looking at. But, uh, there are a, a number of areas we could look at and talk with the engineer about potential cost savings.
Okay.
So.
That's great.
I think, I think that's what you're looking for. And I think absolutely that's what we'll be doing. And I will have a, a rough draft of what that might look like for the third.
Okay, great. Let's, uh, go ahead and move on.
Can I ask one?
Please do.
Would it, would it be helpful, and is it within the scope of what we asked the engineer to do, to build us a construction timeline with the steps and dollar figures associated to them so that we know what we're going to be facing this fiscal year and what we might have to encumber that's already approved in the next? have to uncover that's already approved in the next year and then the balance? So you can step it out and show the project cost and progress line all the way down the line and that goes a long way toward making the picture pretty clear as to what it's gonna cost and when we're gonna have to find the money.
Yeah, I think that the.
And that, and that's exactly what I wanna plug into is, is exactly as you described it. And you have to somehow also build that in such a way that one of the latter pieces, if not approved by the public, can be pulled back.
Yeah.
H. E. Callahan did a great job.
I don't think that'll happen, by the way.
Yeah.
I think the public will support.
Finishing.
Finishing the project.
But we can't assume.
Yeah.
Making the assumption is, is not a right thing to do, that's all.
No, I, I agree. And to your point, Ralph, the, the product is entirely appropriate, that I believe would be very much the purview and the responsibility of the contractor.
Okay.
Because if the engineer puts a proposal together, the contractors look at it and say, who the hell are you?
I would rather see the contractor's numbers given our experience so far with the other side.
So that's something that we will be getting from the contractor, so that might take a little while. We won't have that piece ready for, you know, bid selection or proposal selection.
H. E. Callahan did a fantastic job with that on the dam project.
Yes.
To several meetings over the summer and they had a, and they just, they excel at that. So that's something to consider in your bid acceptance.
Absolutely.
And I have one last question.
Please.
We are, we are increasing capital reserves for this next fiscal year. Do they correspond to a list of capital projects going out perhaps five years? Anything beyond five is not really worth anything, but I don't know what they are.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's probably my fault.
Are we having a CIP review?
We are, it's in the schedule, I can't recall the exact date, but it's, it's in the, the budget meeting schedule.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Chris has it.
All, all of the, all of those projects were brought in and looked at. We've had, we had a great and extensive discussion at the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, which is about assets and investments at the transfer station because we continue to see.
Two twenty-seven.
An improvement there.
Two twenty-seven.
But that's one of the areas where, where it's probably tightest. So we, we are looking at those expenditures five years out, seven, I think, is what we have shown right now on our CIP plan, maybe even 10.
Four weeks from now.
Yeah.
We'll be doing that.
I always like to kill the acronym whenever I can. So CIP for public watching is capital investment plan. Okay, great.
Good, yes.
We'll move on to 20067, which is to consider commercial hauler license renewals. I believe there are two in the packet.
There are two, we, we have.
Archie's Inc. and Galoche?
Galoche, Ryan Galoche. And they both have submitted complete documentation and paid. I'm waiting on applications from the other commercial haulers, which would be three and although I've heard one of them may have gone out of business, but I, I need to verify that. So I would hope that given the completeness of the applications, the board would approve permits for these two haulers.
I'll make a motion to approve the submitted and complete permit applications for Galoche's waste and for Archie's Incorporated as presented in the packet.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, to approve both permits. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just wanna say that this is a very valuable service and in order to do this in, in Reedfield and to have your refuse, your stuff taken to the transfer station, these guys have to register, they have to be, there, there's a process to go through. If you need any information about these haulers, if you're someone that wants to have information about various haulers that are available in the town of Reedfield because for one reason or another, please get in touch with the town. I'm sure they can give you an extensive list and can help you out.
And so Eric, I guess my one question, are, are there renewals that we're anticipating? You said there's renewals that we anticipate, is there a deadline or somebody that's not gonna be operating?
The deadline was last Thursday.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna be, I'll give them a little bit more time, I guess, I'm not gonna come down.
But they're gonna pick up, they're gonna know that they need to get this.
Absolutely.
You said generally on time, if I recall.
They, they generally are. This year, we went the route of handing out the renewal applications at the transfer station rather than mailing them and that may have had an impact, so I'm gonna follow.
Go back to the mail.
Yeah, I mean, I thought hand delivery would be better, but I, I probably was wrong, so.
They can't all be oil paints.
Maybe they got recycled. All in favor of the motion, please?
Aye, aye.
May have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor. Thank you, Eric.